...Broadway since the Great Depression in the 1930s. Native Americans have a lot to celebrate during American Indian Heritage Month. The city's festivities got underway recently at City Hall. Yana Kay takes us there.
This traditional Native American tribal dance represents family strength and unity, and helped kick off American Indian Heritage Month at City Hall. Participants say the event gives them a chance to show their appreciation to their loved ones.
I have family that takes care of me, and I love my family and friends because they're like older brothers and sisters to me.
Native American Heritage Month also recognizes many of the contributions Native American tribes had on Los Angeles dating back to the 1700s. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, who was sworn into the Wyandotte Nation by the tribe's chief, Billy Friend, last June, said events like these help remind Angelenos of all the sacrifices made by Native Americans.
I think as we mature, we recognize and value more and more our own heritage, the sacrifices that our ancestors made, and that fortifies us and makes us realize that the very DNA that we are made from is made stronger by those that came before us.
Earlier in the day, inside council chambers, O'Farrell recognized the Torres Martinez Desert Keweeah Indians for all the work they do on behalf of Native Americans.
Thanks to your organizations in your city and in your county, they've made it a success for us.
And the hope is, these kinds of celebrations will keep history alive for future generations. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Native American Heritage Month was coordinated by Councilmember O'Farrell and the Native American Indian Commission. A new mural is helping bring character and life to a street that's been a vital part of the Northridge community. Rasha Goel has more on how this mural is reviving the past but setting a new vibe for the future.
For the Northridge community, this new mural is more than just artwork on a wall.
Not only is it the first mural that's going to be part of the history walk of Northridge, but it's a sense of the community coming together.
Northridge Sparkling Campaign, a beautification organization, and the Museum of the San Fernando Valley brought on artist Tim Cornelius to create the mural.
Because my dad's a fine artist, and he loves to paint trains and depots, I thought I would do this as an homage to him.
The mural, known as Zelzer Train Depot, is painted on the side of a CD store on the corner of Reseda Boulevard and Rayon Street. It's the first of 11 historically themed pieces of art envisioned for Northridge's Reseda Boulevard, part of a plan to revitalize the city's main business corridor.
We're all looking for a change, to take this community, to take the receipt of the corridor, the gateway to Northridge, and create what you're starting to see today. And there's a vision, and there's a future.
It reminds me of the past, and I have fond memories of the past. My dad grew up in a valley and all that, and it's just lovely.
Reseda Boulevard, from Parthenia to Plummer, is also one of 15 local neighborhoods recently designated by Mayor Eric Garcetti for his Great Streets Initiative, which aims to turn this corridor into a more business and pedestrian-friendly district. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
And a lot more is happening in the valley to improve quality of life. A major thoroughfare there just got a street lift, as city officials make it more pleasant for drivers to get around. Yana Kay has more.
Driving north and southbound on Van Nuys Boulevard between Magnolia Avenue and Ventura Boulevard just got a little more enjoyable thanks to a Los Angeles City repaving project.
You don't hit the potholes, you don't hit the ruts in the street.
Crews resurfaced 1.3 miles of street on the heavily-traveled stretch of the Boulevard, and did it in just two days by using two paving machines at the same time. And for local drivers, it didn't seem to be too much of an inconvenience.
Most of the streets have been paved, and there's no problem. So for a day or two, you take hazelteen or some other street, get around, you know. This is no big deal.
In addition to the repaving, upgrades include new lane stripping, repainted curbs, and sidewalk cleanup.
Our approach right now is to save streets while they are in somehow a fair condition. If we decided to wait, let's say, two more years or three more years, this $600,000 project would become a $2.5 million project.
City officials say they were able to save about 25% on the entire cost of the project. That's because crews were able to reuse and recycle most of the asphalt. Ramps to and from the 101 freeway to Van Nuys were also shut down, allowing Caltrans the opportunity to conduct routine maintenance on the exit ramps. A brief pause in traffic for a smooth ride for years to come. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
It's been 16 years since Van Nuys Boulevard was last resurfaced. With California facing the worst drought on record, many folks are stepping up and doing what they can to save water. As Yana Kay reports, some community members are leading by example.
The Los Angeles Police Department's Topanga Station in the San Fernando Valley welcomes visitors with a tranquil and peaceful setting, complete with drought-tolerant vegetation and California native plants. It's all thanks to LAPD's Topanga Restoring Its Urban Ecosystem, or TRU, Community Landscape Project, an ongoing effort to transform the station's landscape into a sustainable and drought-tolerant garden.
This has been done pretty much entirely with donated funds and volunteer labor.
And for all their efforts, community members and volunteers were recognized recently during a Community Choice Awards luncheon in Woodland Hills.
They do so much in the community on so many levels, not only keeping us safe, but this environmental stewardship through the TRU program has been just fantastic. So Officer Rosso, thank you so much.
Because of the drought and severe heat, the station's previous landscaping dried out and died. So in 2011, the station partnered with community groups to install a drought-tolerant ecosystem.
We don't want someone to come into a building that looks like it's a vacant building because the weeds and everything is dead. We want to make sure that it's a beautiful, enjoyable location.
Ten local business owners who have improved their properties were also honored at the event.
Anything that any of us can do to help with that water recycling and drought-resistant planting and all of that is going to be very helpful in our efforts.
Efforts that don't only make the community look more beautiful, but also help save precious water. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
The TRU project is currently seeking donations in order to install a new irrigation system. A night of compliments for South LA students inspire them to greater achievements in school and in life.
How do you feel?
I feel great to be honored.
Fifth grader Mila Perkins receives a medal for a job well done. The most improved student of the year at Manchester Elementary School gets showered with compliments at a lavish awards dinner, where she and her family can bask in the spotlight.
You know, celebrate my little genius here and inspire her just to capture the world with her imagination and just the beauty within her, you know, and I'm just really proud of her today.
Over 70 South LA students received the Star Treatment at this year's State of the Eighth Awards Gala. Eighth District Councilman Bernard Parks, with his wife Bobby, explains.
What we give is an overview of our accomplishments, but we also honor many of our schools in the Eighth District, many of the classes for the best grade point average in each class, and the most improved student.
This marks the final State of the Eighth event for Parks. As councilman, he'll be termed out of office in July. During his tenures hosting the dinner, he's noticed that many of the most improved students go on to earn highest GPA awards in later years. He largely credits positive reinforcement from parents and from events like this.
I improved in my work and stuff, and I worked really hard.
I know my son works hard in school and, you know, does his very best, so I really appreciate it, and I know he does too.
A handful of adults also received the red carpet treatment for helping the children improve their grades and succeed in school.
Councilman Parks says he's touched when former awardees approach him as adults and tell him they're now in college and pursuing their dreams. City leaders raise awareness on Alzheimer's disease. The city's first non-residential roundabout could ease traffic flow at a busy intersection, and enrolling in an LEDWP payment plan online. These stories in City Beat.
The city council recently helped bring public awareness to a disease plaguing 5 million Americans today: Alzheimer's.
There are over 15 million unpaid caregivers, and that equates to over 17.7 billion hours of care, to the tune of over $220 billion.
The hope is for awareness to result in funding for the treatment of and cure for the disease, but also for financial and emotional support for those who care for those with Alzheimer's. A roundabout is in the works for the community of Boyle Heights and Council District 14. The latest renderings were unveiled for the $4.3 million Cinco Puntos traffic circle to be constructed with the existing All Wars Memorial on East Caesar Chavez Avenue as its centerpiece. Cinco Puntos means five points in Spanish. While popular in Europe and on the east coast, where they are also called rotaries, this roundabout is thought to be the first non-residential one here in Los Angeles. Instead of a traditional intersection, a roundabout requires motorists to slow down and merge into a circular traffic pattern, looping them around to their exit. Los Angeles Department of Water and Power customers now have the ability to enroll in payment plan options online at ladwp.com. Ladwp's payment plan helps customers who may need a little more time to pay their utility bill. In the past, the only way to enroll in a payment plan was to call the Ladwp customer contact center and speak with a customer service representative. Now customers can visit ladwp.com 24 hours a day, seven days a week to enroll. But Ladwp customers must have an online account and meet eligibility requirements to enroll.
You can find LA history in some unexpected places. Case in point, a fast food joint in Wilmington can now call itself a historical landmark.
Wiener Schnitzel has been dishing out fast food in a hot dog bun to hungry customers for decades, and now the very first Wiener Schnitzel in the nation, located in Wilmington, is finally getting its due. The city of Los Angeles designated the fast food stand built at 900 West Pacific Coast Highway a historical landmark.
We're here to officially celebrate the first Wiener Schnitzel in the entire world here in Wilmington, California, and also recognize John Gallardi, who is the entrepreneur who came here in Wilmington in 1961 and decided to open the first hot dog stand.
John Gallardi was only 23 years old when he opened his first store not long after working at Taco Tia, a restaurant owned by Glenn Bell Jr., creator of the Taco Bell restaurant chain.
So John thought about it, and he thought, well, I can't do tacos. That would be competing with my friend, his best friend at the time, Glenn Bell. I don't want to compete with the McDonald Brothers, so I'm going to do hot dogs.
There's stories for days about this place that I probably can't get into. Just kidding. Yeah, 1961, it opened its doors and, you know, it set the precedent for the rest of the chain, and for it still to be standing today and for the city of LA and Wilmington to honor it and classify it as a historical landmark is a huge deal, and we couldn't be more excited.
Bob Trejo, who along with his real estate partner, went into business with Gallardi and built this very first stand, as well as some 500 other Wiener Schnitzels.
We grew too fast, and we got in a lot of financial trouble. Couldn't pay the bills, and so we sent a letter out to 200 landlords and said, "We're not paying any rent. If you have any questions, call." Well, they all called, and so it took us about five years to work it out. But then we put in a "Buy a Coke, Keep the Glass" promotion, and it tripled our sales. It was 15 cents for the Coke glass. So we sold 15 million of those, and that's what saved our company.
One smart promotion and countless hot dogs. Now that's the stuff fast food legends are made of.
This is the fourth historical designation in Wilmington, and this Wiener Schnitzel in Wilmington is only the second roadside food stand to receive such an honor from the city. A local recreation center receives a new gift, one that will hopefully inspire families to exercise and enjoy the outdoors. Rasha Goel has more.
Residents are celebrating the grand opening of the Fred Roberts Synthetic Soccer Field in South Los Angeles. The new field is a major renovation at the center.
You know, they covered an old dirt field that used to be here, and we made some improvements on the exterior, some benches there, a little exercise cycle, so it's a real family-friendly.
It's looked totally different. It looked better.
The new synthetic field is the 28th field to be operated and maintained by the Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks in an effort to provide better resources for the community.
By putting one field, it's like serving three additional soccer fields, because it could be played on nonstop.
An amazing park like this will provide a lot of opportunities for youth soccer players out here to get out there and run around and work hard.
Aside from inspiration, officials say synthetic fields save roughly 1.8 million gallons of water per year. Perhaps that's a goal worth kicking for. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Other renovations at the Fred Roberts Park include new security lights, a walking path, and new fencing. In this week's list of things to do, the reindeer romp at the LA Zoo, a free family art workshop, and an exhibit called Hothouse.
There is no shortage of holiday things to do here in LA. For starters, the ever-popular reindeer have landed at the LA Zoo for the holidays. They will spend Christmas and New Year's here before flying off on January 4. You can pay a visit anytime from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. daily, except on Christmas Day when the zoo is closed. The LA Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to lazoo.org for details. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery holds free family art workshops every Sunday at the Barnstall Art Park campus. The workshop on Sunday, December 7, from 10 a.m. to noon, will touch on the gallery's current LA Islam exhibits. Families are invited to work with diverse materials to create vibrant artworks influenced by the traditional motifs and contemporary images from two exhibitions currently on display featuring Islamic art. All ages are welcome, all materials are provided. Barnstall Art Park is located at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard. Go to barnstall.org. Currently on display at the Watts Towers Art Center is the exhibit Hothouse, on display until January 11. Artist Alison Sarr's Hothouse addresses the tug of nature on our bodies and psyche. Two sculpted pieces, Poison and Fallow, two female figures, frame the scope of the work in the show. Poison's abdomen reveals a flourishing scene, alive with moths, cocoons, and caterpillars. Fallow's abdomen, however, reveals a dark and somber scene of death and infertility. The Watts Towers Art Center is located at 1727 East 107th Street. For gallery hours, go to wattstowers.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Look at the head movements, the angles of the bodies, checking the ground for signs, trails in the game of the enemy. Looking through the rises for dust clouds and the cavalry. Our warriors are prepared. I've got trouble, trouble, trouble. It seems there's always...
Car accident deaths are a possibility, a probability. What if you don't get a chance to say goodbye? What if there are no more birthday celebrations or friendly conversations because you're just not here? Put the phone down. Practice hands-free driving, and give yourself and others a chance to participate in life. Obey the rules of the law.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Got you. Good morning, good morning, good morning. I want to welcome you to the Valley and our City Hall Valley. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but we can begin today's work with some of our presentations that we have. So with that said, Madam Clerk, I think what I'm going to do is ask for a great Valley member himself, Mr. Bob Blumenfield, to start us off today with a very important presentation. Did I lose Bob? We lost him. There he is, we found him. We found him.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Noah and her family to come on up. We're here, we're going to honor Noah Michaelis, who is a strong, fearless, 11-year-old girl who has gone through so much at a young age. Come on up and stand with me while we talk. Let's give her a hand. Noah, if I could want to stand up on the chair. She was born with congenital heart disease, and congenital heart disease is the number one birth defect worldwide. It literally affects one out of 100 children, and it can be very severe. Many children don't live past the first year. At the age of five, Noah underwent three open-heart surgeries. She received a thoughtful care package from Hopeful Hearts Foundation and was inspired to pay it forward with other children. So what she did is, she wanted to come home, and she wanted to do something. And what she really wanted back in '09 when she came home was nothing more than to celebrate with a carnival-like festival in her backyard of games and cotton candies. Is that kind of like what it was when you first left? Yeah. And so she started something called Noah's Festival of Life. And originally, it was just her welcome-home party, but she expanded it, and her family expanded it, to become a fundraiser that included a silent auction, and a raffle, and a way to raise money for others who have the same issues. She also, in furtherance of her goals, as a young, ambitious upstart who's making a difference in an important area, she started a lemonade stand in front of her house, right around the corner from Fire Station 72 in Canoga Park. And the firefighters became some of her most loyal customers. In fact, we have one of her most loyal customers here, Wayne Schutz, who's now captain, who's just recently made captain, and representing the firefighters there, who worked with her, you know, hand and glove, and they would come regularly to her lemonade stand, and they helped with her festival. And her festival grew, and she gave thanks recently to the Fire Station 72. She hosted a pizza party for them, for their unwavering support of her and her friendship. Now, you wouldn't guess it, but her mission has been wildly successful. She has raised over $60,000 to date to help Hopeful Hearts Foundation. Very impressive. And through the Hopeful Hearts Foundation, families across the country receive financial assistance during their child's extended hospital stay, and care packages are given to aid and comfort in their healing. Though Noah's Festival of Life, through her Festival of Life fundraising and her year-round lemonade stand, mostly year-round, sometimes you've got to take a break, she continues to inspire us in so many ways and be an example of how to lift the spirit and make a positive difference in the lives of so many. I'm proud that you're in the district and to get to know you. I have a wonderful certificate, but I know Noah wants to say a few words to all of us, and so I'm going to give the mic and move your chair over and give the mic to Noah.
Would you know what, Mr. Blumenfield? Before Noah speaks, there are a couple of members that would like to say a few things about her.
Okay.
And I'll start out myself. To come here and to see Noah sitting... And I'll start out myself. To come here and to see Noah sitting in my chair was an upgrade, okay? So, because you could be the future of tomorrow. She was so just delightful, so easy to talk to. You wouldn't think she would have a care in the world. And look at this, and this little bitty body has raised all of that money, grown up to be serious, wanna share. This is, you're unbelievable. And I have to commend your family as well. But anyway, I hope that one day, Noah, when I'm in my wheelchair, I'll turn on the television to watch the City Council and see you sitting right here. All right? With that said, Mr. Mitchell Englander.
Wow, Mr. President, and, look, she's taller than you are as well, so I just, look at that. Noah, and I think your parents named you right, because your name is biblical. And for what you've done, you are an inspiration, not just to kids out there everywhere, but to all of us. Because you are truly God's gift, and God bless you. So thank you for everything that you continue to do.
Noah, the floor is yours. Go right ahead.
I like it, using technology.
That would excite you, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Hi, everyone. My name is Noah Bella Michaelis. First, I want to say thank you to Councilman Bloomingfield for inviting me to speak in front of the entire L.A. City Council. I am excited and honored to be speaking to each of you about my mission to raise awareness for congenital heart disease and my efforts to financially help heart families. I'm 11 years old, and I was born with Heterotaxy Syndrome and a complex case of congenital heart disease, or C-HD. I've been through four open-heart surgeries and many other procedures. Did you know that congenital heart defects are the number-one birth defect worldwide? And did you know that nearly twice as many children die from congenital heart disease in the U.S. each year than from all forms of childhood cancers combined? Yet, funding for congenital heart disease is five times lower than funding for pediatric cancer. Each year worldwide, 100,000 babies under 1 years old will not live to celebrate their first birthday. I believe funding for pediatric heart research is important because it allows more doctors and researchers to conduct better studies and save the lives of so many babies and children with C-HD. I am very fortunate to live here in Los Angeles, where I continue to receive world-class care by UCLA and Children's Hospital Los Angeles. I ask that you continue to support these local hospitals and their critical C-HD research. Not only does our field is important to raise awareness for C-HD, but helping others is a passion of mine. Five years ago, I spent nearly an entire year in the hospital undergoing three of my heart surgeries. It was during that time that I received a gift basket from the Hopeful Hearts Foundation. This gift basket gave me Hopeful Hearts Foundation. They are a nonprofit organization that promotes C-HD awareness and early detection and support for heart families. This gift basket gave me hope. It made me forget about my surgery. Most of all, it made me forget I was in the hospital to begin with. From the day I received that gift basket until now, I've wanted other kids like me to feel the same joy and excitement I had when I received mine. The thought that someone I didn't even know cared enough to send me the gift basket was a big deal for me. Since then, I've had desire and a commitment to help other kids, to help other heart kids and their families. In 2010, my parents and I started Noah's Festival of Life fundraiser to raise money for the Hopeful Hearts Foundation. The money we raise helps heart families with financial assistance due to their extended hospital stays and care packages for these families to comfort them while their child is in the hospital. Although my festival first began as my homecoming celebration in the hospital, from my fourth surgery, it has turned into an incredible way to help ease the burden of heart families across the country. Just this past October, we had our third festival and fundraiser for Hopeful Hearts. We not only made our goal of raising $25,000, but I am proud to say we successfully raised over $30,000. Our fundraisers only happen every other year, so I wanted to figure out a way to give back in the years in between. With my lemonade stand that my Uncle Dave built for me, I was able to do just that. But it was last summer, after a tough recovery from my angioplasty, that I was not able to sell my lemonade during regular business hours due to extreme heat. So what did I do? I set up shop for nighttime lemonade stands. Unfortunately, I only had one customer until my neighbor Carol had the idea of calling the local fire station. Firemen Wayne, the team of Station 72, answered the call. I couldn't believe my eyes when I saw them rounding the corner to my block with their sirens blaring and their lights flashing. This was the beginning of something special. Station 72 changed my life. Their visit became so popular in my neighborhood that I left from one lemonade stand to another, bringing all of us together while raising funds for Hopeful Hearts and sharing my story. Firemen Wayne, now Captain Wayne, and so many of the other L.A. city firefighters from all around my neighborhood have looked at my spirits during this tough year and have helped me bring awareness to C-HD. I'm here to ask you, our city leaders, to join me in my efforts in raising awareness for C-HD. Please support your local hospital's pediatric cardiac department as they lead the efforts in C-HD research and care for kids like me. I want to officially thank all the L.A. city firefighters and everyone in my neighborhood for their support. Thank you. Our council members for having me here today. I also want to thank my mom and dad for always being there for me. Thank you.
What a great job she did. Let's give her a big hand. Awesome, Noah. You really are an inspiration. And in addition to the teddy bear and the flowers, we have this wonderful certificate that's signed by all the members of the City Council for you. It's a nice keepsake to have.
You know, Noah and Mr. Bloomingfield, there was not a sound, and I think that's the first time that I have experienced it, was not a sound when Noah got up to speak. In fact, I'd just say, Noah, it's too early for me to cry, but I found myself wiping away the tears. You are phenomenal. Let's give her another round of applause. The lights and sirens were okay. Dad? We didn't hear that. Nobody heard that.
We brought our tribute journals from the festival to pass out to the City Council members, and I think Jenny said she'll pass out afterwards, so you can take a look through there.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, Bob, because of what you've done, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, we do have a quorum, so why don't we officially kick this off? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Busciano, Sidil, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Caress, Cricorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 12 members present a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves. Mr. Cricorian seconds. Next?
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Fuentes moves. Mr. Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there's a request to continue Item 1 to December 12th.
Without objection, that will be the order?
Items 2 and 3 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body?
And Mr. President, for Item 2, a public hearing was held by the Plaine and Land Use Management Committee at its meeting on December 2nd, and a copy of the committee report is being circulated.
Okay, so out of those items, which ones do we have cards on?
There's cards on both, however, but the cards on Item 3 are the only ones that need to be heard.
Okay, so why don't we take up Item 2 at this time? Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Okay. What did you drop over there? Next, Madam Clerk?
On the continuation agenda, Item 4 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Item 4, members, anyone want to call it special? Let's prepare to vote on that item as well. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote? Okay, let's move on, Madam Clerk.
Item 5 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards on it?
Yes, there's cards.
Okay, so that moves us where?
Mr. President, that brings Council to presentations or items called special?
Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to defer to Mr. Englander. A great Valley representative himself.
Well, I don't know how to top Noah, but this is, this is pretty cool, Mr. President, colleagues. Today, I am proud and honored to recognize the 30th anniversary of The Karate Kid movie. Yes. This is especially significant this week as the City Council continues to strive to revitalize the film industry here in Los Angeles. This week, we took an important first step towards keeping film and television production here in our city. Because of movies like The Karate Kid, the San Fernando Valley and the city of Los Angeles became ingrained in the hearts and in the minds of moviegoers as the capital of cinematic arts. The San Fernando Valley is the heartbeat of The Karate Kid. From Reseda, from the new home of the movie's main character, to Chatsworth, where Mr. Miyagi and Daniel trained on the Chatsworth Nature Preserve, and finally in Northridge, the filming location of the All Valley Karate Championship at Cal State University-Northridge at CSUN. In June of 1984, now mind you, I was 14 years old when this movie came out. I was their target audience. Still am, that's right. The limited budget and no big-name stars at the time, one of the great underdog stories of all time, was released and became an instant classic. That film was The Karate Kid. If a hallmark of an iconic film is its relevance decades later, and the fact that much of the dialogue has become as part of the soundtrack of our lives and the fabric of popular culture, then The Karate Kid truly holds that iconic status. To this day, phrases like "wax on", "wax off", "paint the fence", and the challenge of catching a fly with chopsticks are all still prominent pop culture references. In fact, let's go ahead and show the clip. Is there audio?
Can we try to?
Yeah, I can go ahead and...
We know our dialogue, we could just do it.
You gotta hit pause and start it again here. Start it again. Take two.
I can't believe this. I cannot believe this.
What?
But you just got me into it there.
Huh?
You said you were gonna make things better for me.
Ah, did?
How?
How? Just to save you two months of beefing.
How much longer till we get to your house?
Other say trucks.
What are you, what are you, in the oil business too?
Not everything is a sim.
This place reminds me of Newark. What are we gonna do here?
Start to training. Much work be done. Tournament here before you know it.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of.
Daniel, look, everything above your waist is a point. You can pad, you can hit the stardom.
Technology was better back then.
Where am I, over here at this one?
Hey, I'm at three.
Looks like I'm ill like that fool.
Oh, no.
Don't you know anything you can tell me?
Hey, I'll get it.
This story, this movie, reminds all of us that hard work truly makes dreams come true, and that good guys can, in fact, finish first. Just ask Mr. Miyagi. An underdog of its own, The Karate Kid became an instant blockbuster grossing over $91 million in the box office. And that's back then when ticket sales for movies were only $3. It made stars of Ralph Macchio, Pat Morita, and many more, who were nominated for an Academy Award for Best Supporting Actor. It cemented the legacy of its legendary director, who is with us here today, John, who I'm gonna bring up in a moment. Let's give him a round of applause. He's one of the great underdog storytellers of all time. In fact, he also directed what is considered an all-time against-all-odds movie and won an Academy Award for his work. That film was rocky. In a moment? In a moment, I want to hear from him. But one of the more exciting elements is that this is a true San Fernando Valley story. If you recall, The Karate Kid inspired youth to take up martial arts in the name of arming themselves with self-esteem and self-defense. In addition to John, I'd like to also acknowledge some other special guests that we've got in chambers with us today. First, the villainous coach of the Cobra Kai karate team, Martin Cove, who's had a long and illustrious career in TV and film. I'd also like to introduce two members of the Cobra Kai team, Tony Odell and Ron Thomas, also with us today. We also have Sean Kanan, who played the Karate Kid nemesis in Karate Kid 3 and is a regular on The Bold and the Beautiful, with us today. Also present today is Kenpo Karate Grandmaster and cast member in The Karate Kid, Daryl Vidal, who created the iconic crane kick stance. Perhaps one of the most important members here today is Richard Davis Jr. He was the location manager that recognized the San Fernando Valley and said, "This film has to be shot here." Let's give Richard a round of applause. Let's give Richard a round of applause. And last, but not least, our favorite villain at the end that learned his lesson from Ralph Macchio, a dear friend of mine, in fact, Billy, come on up here. We went to high school together, an El Camino alumni conquistador right here, and in fact, at the time when he was filming the movie, his girlfriend in high school was my tutor. And I was her tutor, so I taught him. That's right, taught me everything I know. So Billy Zapka. So on behalf of all of us from the City of Los Angeles, we've got this for John, and we've got them for all of you as well, and I'd like to call you up to say a few words, but before I do, without further ado, congratulations for creating what has become truly legendary in the film industry and here in the San Fernando Valley. So, thank you. We'll do photos on the side as well.
You know, Mitchell, before you start, we do have a member or two on the queue, and I do want to say to, I think it's Billy and Martin, you guys were great as bad guys. I mean, people hated you. I'm glad to see that you're nice guys and all, but you really did your job. Phenomenal movie, I've probably seen it at least 20-some-odd times. Mr. Bloomingfield, I'm sure another fan.
Big fan, big fan of the movie, and I want to thank Mr. Englander for bringing this recognition forward and bringing you guys here. You know, I represent the adjoining district, I represent some of the major parts of this movie, Reseda, Canoga Park, Woodland Hills, all of which we saw in the clips, and it is still a part of the fabric. I go to meetings, people use the catchphrases, you know, I'd like to say, as I'm driving over, I see people on posts constantly in the crane kick, I don't quite see that, but it really is, it really is part of our fabric, and I know the President, when we're having trouble, he always tells us that there's no fear in this dojo. It's a great movie, and it's been a great part of the Valley history, and certainly the whole world appreciates the movie, but the people in my district really appreciate it because it is the hometown movie, and so thank you for being part of that, and Mitch, thank you for bringing it forward.
The floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you, we are honored to be here, and we were very lucky to make the San Fernando Valley our home for a while. It was the most pleasurable experience making this movie here. I wish our esteemed producer, Jerry Weintraub, were here, and the writer of The Karate Kid, Robert Kamen, because without them, we wouldn't be here. I also want to thank my son Anthony for putting together the video clip that we just saw. The fun we had making this movie here, I've never had so much fun making a movie, and usually they're a pain in the neck, but this one was great. We want to thank you all very, very much, and we couldn't have had a better time in your neighborhood. It was the best, thank you.
Thank you very, very, very much. Mr. Bloomingfield, you've got the chance to say a few words, which is good, and Mitch, who's the location manager? That's a very special man. I know Mr. Kokorian is fighting hard, as all of us are, for shooting in LA, you got to sleep at home at night. That's a good thing. Mitchell.
You know, they did say, I believe, karate not here, karate here, filming here, San Fernando Valley, City of Los Angeles. God bless you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Nury Martinez of the great 6th District of the San Fernando Valley for the next presentation,
Today, I get the honor of honoring a landmark in my district that's just across the street from us. Fire Station 39 is more than a fire station. This station was a public works project back in 1939 and has been, and has seen the transformation of Van Nuys before its very doors. From the GIs returning from World War II to the cruising culture of the 70s, Fire Station 39 has protected our community. Today, our community has changed significantly. While we've grown, the men and women that keep our families safe maintain the same responsibilities and the same duties to protect our communities. And even though its building is beautiful, these brave firefighters deserved a new location to build, to be built, to be able to meet its modern needs. Soon, the state-of-the-art station will relieve the current crime conditions and update their technology to best serve our residents without compromising its historic building. And the historic Fire Station 39 will begin its new chapter here in Van Nuys. I want to work with you colleagues to protect this building and to ensure that the community continue to enjoy the new facilities for another 25, 75 years. Although we have a wonderful celebration a couple of weeks ago across the street here in Van Nuys, celebrating with former and current firefighters, today, I want to welcome the firefighter, the firefighting family, and welcome Battalion Chief Vay to speak to us today. He's new to the fire station and new to this area, so I want to welcome our battalion chief to say a few words, and after him, I'd like to ask our Fire Commissioner Fazio to also say a few words, if he doesn't mind. He was with us in the celebration a couple of weeks ago. So Battalion Chief?
Good morning. Like the Councilwoman Martinez said, this fire station opened its doors in July of 1939. The members before you here respond to approximately 6,000 calls a year, and they maintain this fire station. So I want to thank them for maintaining the station and doing a great job for our community here in Van Nuys. I also want to thank Councilwoman Martinez and her staff for the help in the preparation, the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and the other city family that assisted in preparing for this great event. I want to also thank the community for coming out and supporting our celebration, and I thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I guess I would just like to say, not having been told, I would be asked to say a few things, but I would like to say thank you to the council, Councilwoman Martinez at all here, in that the support for the Fire Department and with our new administration, with our new Chief Tarasus, is really on the move, and I think it's gonna really make this council and this mayor and the city proud when you see some of the changes that are currently underway between the four-bureau concept, which is now being, you know, implemented with the chiefs and with all of the different little areas that the department has been sort of hoping to get to, but hasn't really been given that support, but now has that support. You're gonna be really proud of what you see in the next couple of years in this Fire Department. I can promise you that as one of the five members of the commission, and thank you for your support for this new fire station. If you've been over there, you can see it's a little tough to park, it's a little tough on the ingress egress, and I don't know what the time interval is for the new station, and nobody seems to really know, but I hope that that's something that'll be pushed forward. So, thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, for allowing me a moment, and thank you, council, for your support of a great Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Battalion Chief, where did you go? Well, on behalf of the LA City Council, congratulations on 75 years of a wonderful fire station across the street from us, and I look forward to another 75 years in your new location. That's gonna happen.
That's a long process.
Ms. Martinez, thank you for your leadership, especially on the new station, which is so important for all of Van Nuys and the greater area. I have Assistant President Pro Tem privileges right here, Ms. Martinez, after this picture here. Get that shot right there, very good shot. Ms. Martinez, after they get that, get up there, fellas. Ms. Martinez, before you're done, right there, hold on firefighters, as Assistant Pro Tem of Council, I want to order Chief Arbuthnot, who was my first employee 40-years ago in 1974, to say a few words and introduce himself as well. Daryl Arbuthnot worked on Mayor... Wait a second, Daryl, until I call on you. Daryl worked on Mayor Bradley's summer youth beautification program, I was a college supervisor, and I'm so proud, he's now the new chief of the San Fernando Valley. Chief, explain just a little and tell us what it is. Chief Arbuthnot.
Daryl Arbuthnot, I've been with the department 34-years, reassigned now to the Valley, and looking forward to the opportunity to come out here and basically be the voice for all your Valley issues. It's been great working with Tom over the years, and I look forward to establishing relationships similar with all the council folks, so thanks, Tom, for the opportunity to allow me to speak briefly.
Thank you very much, Daryl, and for everybody to know, historically, when Daryl was on the back of the truck, all I had to do is go like this, Felipe, and he'd get off and get the couch, and we had to clean district, so you were very good, got on the back of the fire truck. Ms. Martinez, give Ms. Martinez a big hand for her great leadership. Now, I'm gonna call on myself for the next presentation.
From the great 4th District, Tom Labance.
Members, this is someone who's seen you in the last 40-years. Carl Stein is a great photojournalism photographer, video editor, combination writer, who does everything for KCBS, Channel 2 News, for the last 40-years. He grew up at Aurora, Illinois. Aurora, Aurora, went to Aurora High School in Illinois, went with the Blues Brothers back there in Illinois, and then went to the University of Florida, a Gator, and then was an intern when he first got his first job in the business. But over the years, he has done a tremendous asset for Los Angeles. It's the people behind the camera that are the ones who capture the moment, that explain to the public what is going on, and so many times Carl has been out there as someone who is getting that particular image for all of us to see over the years. He has completed his 40-years, coming up here this weekend, your last assignment, we have this combination resolution signed by our mayor as well, but I want to tell something a little bit more. If you could get me, Karen, get me a hand mic, will you, real quick, this is real important, if you could? Thank you so much. Over the careers that he has had covering events, in the '84 Olympic Games, to the severe riots of '92, to the earthquake of '94, all these he captured with his camera. He was a Golden Mike, Emmy Award-winning photographer, and also, and he was named Press Photographer of the Year by the Los Angeles Press Photographers Association in 2006. But the real thing is this, he worked on a show called Two on the Town, anybody remember Two on the Town? Okay? And also, he worked on the first reality show, the first reality show of all-time, which was put up out there by George Schafter, is that correct? Schlotter, who was there, and it was on NBC, it was called Real People, first reality show. But the real thing that he did, and as a photographer, which you gotta understand, is that Jim Hill was, is still a great news photographer, but Jim Hill was the first sideline reporter to ever be on the sidelines at any sporting events, football mainly at the Coliseum, and Carl was his cameraman, and the play would be going on, because Jim was a ballplayer, played for the Packers, he knew the National Football League, he coached, would be Jim Hill, the play would be like third and 12 on the 17-yard line, the Raiders were going in, Jim would start and describe the play as Carl was shooting, and all of a sudden, there would be Cliff Branch catching the pass for a touchdown, and you would have to capture that all in real-time as a news photographer on the sidelines. He broached the breakthrough when videotape came along and surpassed film for the sideline work, and working with Jim Hill, who's such a talented sportscaster, that was a real craft, because nobody has done that as well as Jim Hill did, but nobody did as better as you, Carl, and what you did as a photographer for that. So I, when I heard that he was retiring, wanted to make sure that we honored him, because they're the thankless ones. We all know the people with the microphone, but we often don't know the people with the camera. And Carl, you're very special, a special breed of people. Your beautiful wife is here today, which I want to call her up as well, his wife of 32-years, Wendy, they live out in Westlake Village, and also you have your two daughters, Samantha and Erin, and if you want to join us at all. And someone you know who are veterans, I don't know, maybe Mr. West is the only veteran real here, Mr. Kokorian, I'm sure would know, Linda Breakstone is here with us today. I'm gonna call Linda up here right now. Linda, come here, Linda.
Come on, Breaks.
I want you to say a word about how important... Linda, say a few words about how important a photographer...
I remember this young lady.
I know her.
Hello!
Well, I'll tell you, when I did the presidential campaigns, I literally wouldn't go unless they would allow Carl to be my cameraman, he is that good, seriously, because stuff always happens. It always happens, cameras break, you know, her leaves and runs away, we gotta catch you, all that stuff. Carl's so awesome, he's fabulous, really, really fabulous, well-deserved.
And Linda, when you mentioned that, David Goldstein, is that right? Goldstein, excuse me, I threw a stone at me, so I throw that at him. Anyway, he's at council one day, a couple of months ago, and I go up and talk to him, and Carl's there, his photographer, and I'm talking to him casually, and how you doing on that investigation of the county, or, you know, that stuff. Anyway, at the end of the meeting, all of a sudden, poor Carl had to run his camera on, because David Goldstein came up to me and said, "Why didn't you pay your fee for the Harbor Freeway?" He said to me, "David," and Carl had to capture that, this is after I told we'd honor him, you see? And he had to do that. And then what I did, lucky, always carry a check in your wallet, because I went right down, and Carl caught it on camera, me paying the check for $14.12 for using the Harbor Freeway transitway. Life is a circle, you are a circle. He's a wonderful, wonderful friend. When they were at 61, 21 Sunset Boulevard, at KNXT at KCBS, one of your colleagues passed, and we put a memorial tree up. When that project, Mitch, is in your district now under total renovation, it was moved out to Studio City and Mr. Kokorian's district, which is a wonderful, the Studio City Center, Television Center there. This is a special man who's done a special job. I wish you and Wendy and the girls a great retirement. It seems just like yesterday, there were the Olympics, and yesterday, there was the earthquake, and today, there was the blue sky. Here's Carl's blue sky. Give him a big hand.
Oh, goodness. I want to thank the council, this is just a wonderful moment to share with my friends and family and colleagues, it's just fabulous. I thought this was gonna be a lot easier, but I mean, my goodness. 75-years with Station 39 across the street, the hub, and the wonderful folks at the Fire Department, and those guys always have our backs for this town, just love them. 30-years, the iconic Karate Kid, my goodness. And how about 11-years, 11-year-old Noah? I mean, I am just so emotionally torn, I mean, the poise of that little girl, and the story is just incredible, and that's what we've been dealing with all these years, it's all about the stories, about the fabric of the city, and it's just been a great honor to participate in that, along with my other colleagues out in the streets. It's not always an easy go, but we make the most of it, and we never give up. We always pursue our goal of getting the best story to the people of LA. It's a great city, this is a great honor, and I just can't thank you enough. And Tom, that tree for Larry, God rest his soul, we'll always be indebted to you for making that happen. There's a new Columbia Square rising in Hollywood, but Larry's tree now is with us at Broadcast Center in Studio City, will always be there, and Larry, I shared this moment with you today from the bottom of my heart, and to the council, thank you so much.
Can you take a picture over here? Is that true about Jim and you? That was tough, right?
Ms. Martinez, and then you'll be followed by Mr. Price. I believe, Nury, you have another presentation? Do you want to go now? Oh, Mr. Price, are you ready to go now?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I am excited to welcome our guest, a special guest visiting from Colombia for a very special occasion. Jaime Ortiz Marinho is a Colombian architect from Bogota who has built a career pioneering innovative work promoting the use of multimodal transportation in Colombia and around the world. Serving in various capacities, Mr. Ortiz has served as Special Consultant to the President of Colombia, advising him on mass transit issues. He's also served as Secretary of Public Works for Bogota, the Colombian capital, as well as Executive Director of the Society de Milhoras y Ordnato. But one of his greatest accomplishments, which has been a gift to countries all over the globe, is his role in co-founding Ciclovia in nineteen seventy-four.
Wow.
This project, which pioneered the concept of shutting down roads to cars and opening up to pedestrians and cyclists, helped launch the Open Streets Movement that has been embraced by so many cities, including Los Angeles. In fact, this Sunday, Ciclovia is going to make its way to South LA, covering Districts Eight, District Nine, and District Ten, from La Mert Park down King Boulevard to Central Avenue. This is an exciting opportunity and the first time Ciclovia has been in South LA. And so, we're honored that Mr. Ortiz Marinho is here to celebrate with us today. And it's also marks the fortieth anniversary of Ciclovia worldwide. And we want to thank Mr. Ortiz and ask him to share a few words with us. But before, let me introduce Aaron Pavly, the Executive Director of Ciclovia Los Angeles, who can tell us more about the significance of this great event and our visitor with us today. Aaron?
All right, let's give Aaron. Aaron, good to see you.
Great to see you, Councilman, and the whole council. It's great to be here in Van Nuys, my hometown. This is where I'm from, Grant High School. And we're looking forward to Ciclovia coming to the San Fernando Valley in the spring. So, we're very excited about that. We're looking forward to coming to all of your districts in the San Fernando Valley. So, what's really exciting about Ciclovia and Jaime Ortiz behind me is that he and Ciclovia in Bogota is the inspiration for Ciclovia here in Los Angeles. We would not be where we are were it not for what they have done and what he has done. So, Ciclovia in Bogota had launched a worldwide movement where people now, in hundreds of cities around the world, have this open streets idea where you open up the street to people and take the cars off for one Sunday. And so, that we can all get together and go break down obstacles between people, break down obstacles between neighborhoods, and come together in a very significant way. And the example of Bogota was the thing that taught us how to do it. So, the first group of people went down in two thousand and eight, Bobby Gada and Adonia Lugo. And they went to Bogota, and they came back. They went to the LA County Bicycle Coalition. They said, "Why can't we do this here?" And we met with this great guy Jaime Ortiz. And then I went down and said, "Wow, let's do this." And so, it's really been the example of, literally, of what Bogota did. Because Bogota looks like LA. This is something which is amazing. When you go down there, it looks so much like us. And we are taking an idea from South America, and it's not an idea from Paris or New York. It's something that looks like LA, and we've adapted it to make it ours. And now Ciclovia in Los Angeles is, thanks to all of you and the people of LA, the most important open streets event of its kind in the United States. So, we're proud to have Jaime Ortiz here, our godfather, and to welcome him and to honor him.
Well said.
And looking forward to Sunday.
Well said, well said.
Thank you. We're looking forward to this Sunday. I hope I'll see you out there in eight, nine, and ten for South LA, our first Ciclovia there.
Mr. Price, if I could defer to Mr. Bonin.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing both Aaron and Mr. Ortiz here today. Mr. Ortiz, thank you for starting Ciclovia. Thank you for being one of the international figures advocating for a multimodal transportation system. Bogota, in so many ways, is the future that Los Angeles needs to create so that we can actually get around our city. Aaron, thank you, as always, for Ciclovia. I'm unfortunately going to miss this one this Sunday, but I have a way to make it up to the spirit of this event, because I will be on my honeymoon in Bogota in a few weeks on a Sunday, and I will be there for Ciclovia and will be happily enjoying it. I look forward to it.
That's special, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Price?
May, can our guest have a few words, Mr. President?
Please, we look forward to Mr. Ortiz. And again, I'll say thank you for this inspiration.
Councilman Price, members of the council, to start, Councilman Bonin, I would be very happy to take you around Bogota when you get there. I want to thank all of you. I'm very honored. For me, I take this recognition on the name of the citizenship of Bogota. Because Ciclovia, what it's all about is people. It's done by the people, for the people. And I think it's exactly what is happening in Los Angeles. I want to congratulate Aaron and thank you for inviting me here for this day. I'm really honored. And I think this share of knowledge between our cities is gonna grow up. And at this time, I want to remember something. I was educated here in the sixties with a scholarship. So, I'm very happy to come back and say thank you. Thank you.
Now, thank you, sir.
And on behalf of the citizens of Los Angeles, we've got a resolution signed by all members of the City Council. And we are happy that you are here. We are proud of your achievements, and we look forward to Ciclovia in South LA this Sunday.
Nice. Wow.
And members, you should also know that we'll have some kind of competition between all of the offices on Sunday. And whoever wins this competition, the prize will be, you will be afforded the opportunity to shave Felipe Fuentes. So, if you want to bring back our dear friend, compete this Sunday. Ms. Martinez, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to welcome to council Dr. Lois Lee, President and founder of Children of the Night. I've been familiar with Children of the Night and their services for quite some time here in Van Nuys and in the Los Angeles region and throughout our country. And I was very impressed with the unique services of helping victims of prostitution. For these girls and countless other children across the country, their day-to-day life is scarier than what you and I can imagine. And often, they feel as though there is no hope for the future. But this organization here in my district gives these kids a second chance. And no matter where they are, anywhere in the country, they can call the one-of-a-kind helpline and speak to an actual trained childcare worker. These individuals will intervene with law enforcement and within twenty-four hours provide free taxi ride or airfare travel to remove these victims from these dangerous realities and relocate them into a safer location. This is when they can begin the process of starting over and finding a better life and hope to drive us to help them as well. But this organization actually produces results. Since nineteen seventy-nine, they have rescued over a hundred thousand children from across the country. And in their onsite school, they have sent over a hundred children to college. And they take all the necessary steps to help children through their WAO program that provides support to girls and to get their GEDs and continue to further their education there onsite. Children of the Night is also home to the largest shelter in the nation for victims of sex trafficking between the ages of eleven and seventeen. And it's located here in my district, not too far from City Hall. They create a routine for children and provide them with the food, clothing, hygiene items that they will need upon their arrival. The childcare worker continues to work with these young survivors to make them feel welcome and accepted in their new home. The stability of a schedule and the consistency of teachers that work with them have helped these children build trust and rely on responsible adults that are looking after them. It is a great organization, and I encourage all of my colleagues to visit and learn more about Children of the Night and how you can make a difference in children's lives. Colleagues, I'm so proud to introduce and welcome one of the leading champions on this issue of human trafficking and prostitution, who has led the fight for over thirty-five years across the country to ensure that these young children have a safe place to call home and to be able to rebuild their lives again. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lois Lee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. And thank you especially for your gift of time yesterday. She spent over two hours in the shelter home, meeting with our children and visiting our programs. Children of the Night has been developed and exclusively supported with private donations. Two years ago, we took what we learned to Europe and to develop a global effort. In two thousand and thirteen, we funded a shelter in Lagos, Nigeria, with twenty-five thousand dollars to prevent them from closure because there was no place else for the Nigerian women to return after they were caught by immigration in Rome. We are working to replicate our program in London, and we're becoming very close to being able to do that. But my real work comes from what I've learned here in America. And that is, other countries like America have turned their back on their own children who have been victimized by prostitution right here in their own country and in their own cities. There's been a lot of bamboozle and sidetracking with the human sex trafficking problem. But we all have problems all over the world with our own children, eleven to seventeen, right here in Los Angeles, all over the United States, who've been victimized by this horrible crime. So, I thank you for this. I thank you for your time because it was really important to me.
On behalf of the LA City Council, I want to present this resolution to Dr. Lois Lee on the thirty-fifth anniversary of Children of the Night, where you continue your tremendous success in helping so many of our kids and young women of this horrible crime rebuild their lives. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
Let's lower this a little bit.
I know, but I have to do it at the right time.
We will now go to item number three that was called Special by Cards, or A Card, and that's Mr. Herman.
Residents of Van Nuys, we're looking at the final maps in the various council districts to approve the final mapping for the city engineer reports, hopefully in detailed manner and specific to the item of agenda we're speaking about. Because when federal and state bonds, again, when federal and state bonds are not used accurately to support maps and the idea of using bonds is not adequately in the service.
He is not talking about this final map.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Conclude your remarks, please.
That the listed council files should always have the contacts where these listed related issues are technically specified. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, but we are looking at the location of MapLA number twenty-twelve, two thousand and nine, located at seventy-nine oh five Selma, S-E-L-M-A, and your name, Mr. O'Connell Avenue. And by the way, Mom, Ms. Connell, nice to have you here with us. Thank you. But the point I'm pointing out here in Fairfax Avenue is this. The engineers technically need to stay within the guidelines of the maps for the approval and recommendations by the mayor and his staff before City Council takes any action to approve redesignating borders and guidelines on this official document. And I say in testimony and record that we have an audit regarding final maps in the various council districts. Thank you.
No other speakers on the queue. Over the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item.
Item five, call Special for Cards.
Now, I find it ironic that at City Hall, there is no Page Five, and here in Van Nuys, there is a Page Five. And this consideration of motion by Mr. Fuentes, who got up and left, Mr. Weesar is not here, but the point is not to exceed the fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, or is that, wait a minute, fifteen million dollars for affordable housing projects, affordable housing projects. But yet, how many American veterans are homeless in our streets that reside not just in Van Nuys, around the civic area, but more so in Los Angeles, around the new Department of Justice off the one-on-one freeway? Not to mention that just because we have Simona Avenue and Tahunga with homelessness issues, why can't we subject most of our veterans, our men and women first, to the housing conditions that you don't adequately provide due to your lack of concern to address the real issue of housing for homelessness? But the affordable housing project does not make any sense to Batman because I've been all around town and noticed that the federal dollars that were allocated for these projects under the pretense of our old business, under the redevelopment agencies, was a big fraud.
All right, thank you, Mr.. That concludes your remarks. Next speaker, Donna Paramon. Sergeant, thank him, move him on. Move on. You gotta stay on the topic, sir. Thank you, Ms. Paramon.
Yeah, I'll do the best I can on this. We don't need more bond issues. This is one over there for the homeless, but the only ones that really should be getting it are homeless veterans who have been kicked out of the VA hospitals over in West Los Angeles. But this is a lot of money, fifteen million five hundred dollars for a Simona project over there and Tahunga. It seems to me that you can't take any more money from the homeowners. People are losing their homes as it is. And here, we're gonna be sending for these people over there in Tahunga. They should, you know. And I'm also, it appears to me, you'd like to spend somebody else's money a whole lot, but you don't want to seem to open up video conferencing in Van Nuys. This is not right.
All right, Donna, thank you so much. That concludes your remark. All right, Donna, thank you so much, that concludes your remark. Miriam Folger, from Birmingham High. Class of seventy-six, right, Miriam?
Seventy-five.
That was off a year, I'm sorry, I was trying to...
Anyway, uh, it's not Folger, it's Fogler. The point I'm saying is here, is that, is that this was not put on the agenda with seventy-two hours, it was a violation of the Brown Act, so I just want to point that out. Okay? Uh, number two, we have veterans that have, have needs because they're the ones that put their lives on the line, just like our police department. And let me tell you something, there's got to be communication between the citizens and the police and, and our military, because the point I'm saying is...
Miriam, talk on the issue.
The point I'm saying is, how can you have housing without communication, right? You have to communicate to the veterans and tell them that there is housing available here, you need to provide that to them. They were, they were, they were not given the right because they were kicked out out of West LA and Sepulveda Boulevard, North, North Hill, so...
She is not talking about this item.
All right, Miriam, you gotta talk about the issue. Read it again. Thank you, Miriam, thank you so much. Next is Rick Nightingale, Rick Nightingale.
Yes, why is it every time you try to get something through, you go to a little bond measure? And every time there's a bond measure, ninety percent of the time, the homeowners are paying for it, and it's a giveaway to other people that I, I'm sorry, they're, they're in need and so forth. But it gets a little old that we're always picking up the tab. Some of them, they don't want to work, they're happy as the devil to be living where they're at.
This is not about this item.
The city attorney said it's not about this item, Rick, so you gotta study it more to talk about it. You gotta be specific. Thank you very much. They'll call you on public comment. No, I'm just following directions of the city attorney. Thank you very much. Here's, uh, sergeants, will you make sure that the guests of the council appropriately act? Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, there's no speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes. And Mr. City Attorney, for the record, would you just state for the public, when they speak on an item, it has to be on that item?
That's the goal.
And just be, do it a more legalese, that's what I would say, that's the goal. It's because of, you have to be specific to the item that's on the agenda. Now, we're gonna call, uh, next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
General public comment, very good. Chuck Tannen, first one.
Morning, City Council members. Chuck Tannen, eighty percent of the residents in the city of Los Angeles can't watch our city council meetings on channel thirty-five anymore. It used to be our city channel, but it's now a pay-to-watch cable TV channel that Time Warner controls. What's the point of having a city TV channel thirty-five that no one can watch unless they subscribe to Time Warner Cable and pay to watch it? You know, it's funny, you can watch City Channel Twenty, Santa Monica City Channel, on TV and watch their city council meetings every week for free. How do the residents and stakeholders of this city know what's going on at city council meetings if they can't make it downtown? Tom Labange was going to put forth a motion to restore our city channel and not Time Warner's control of viewing of channel thirty-five. If you're a subscriber of TV, you can watch it. As I said before, LA...
Finish your statement, sir.
One minute, okay. As I said before, it's sad and disgraceful that channel thirty-five was taken off the air, but Santa Monica City can afford to allow it.
Thank you very much, that's very good. I thank you for finishing that, and we are working on it. Mr. Herman?
It's unbelievable and unconstitutional to hold a majority of the public from the valley to one minute. You wonder why we become so offensive and agitated by your insult to one minute, violation of our First Amendment right, and then you wonder why people in Ferguson take the action that you want to respond not to? And in question, the five million dollars for the shooting of a man in a Corvette? Who's at fault? A majority of you paying our hard-working tax-paying dollars for a settlement. And yet, the city attorney there sits there grinning, thinking that the taxpayers' values are not important, and yet, while everyone has a great presentation, and the majority of you, like Mr. Coretts, were eating in front of us, I find that offensive. There are millions of animals in the shelters, Mr. Coretts, that don't have a meal, do not have a meal, animals, so this is general...
Direct it to me, direct it to me.
And I am on damn topic. So I will say the damn right thing in defense...
All right, that concludes your comments. Next speaker is Mark Morris.
Karate Kid, um, Batman, I thank you for holding these meetings in the San Fernando Valley, which has a rich agricultural history along with the movie history, and I want to direct your attention to your council file number thirteen dash one-three-seven-four, which will be voted on, uh, tomorrow, uh, Monday night, uh, by parks, and then Tuesday by the entire, uh, council. What it represents is a, an effort and an opportunity for the city of Los Angeles to show that it can represent its citizens when it comes to GMOs being, uh, foisted on local farmers, on local gardeners, and it has the, the opportu, because what happened was that the state passed their AB twenty-four-seventy at a time when many state senators were running for election, and I'll finish up and just say, thank you for doing your job.
Thank you. Miriam Folger, Fogler, Fogler. A patriot from Birmingham High.
Well, you know, we're having a First Amendment crisis here because you people cut down our time from five minutes, down to two minutes, now down to one minute. Why do you think the people are rising up and they're starting to walk in the streets? And I know they don't want to burn down their communities, they don't, we can't do that, we can't loot and burn down our communities. All we can do is take over the government and change it. That's all you could do, get inside and vote these people out and put yourselves in power, and then you can change the whole system. We could do whatever we want. Once we get in, you got power to change anything. It just takes money and power, I mean, people to back you up, people to help you, okay? Because it looks like to me we're getting now censored what we exactly say, because that was about revenue bonds and what, what, uh, you know, Rick Nightingale was saying, you're, you are, you are violating our rights. Second thing, I do, I, I agree that Eric Hall Gardner was excessively hurt.
All right, thank you, Donna. Let's call on, let, thank you, Miriam. Let's call on Donna Perriman.
You show the valley, but you don't care for it. You don't want the valley to be seen or heard. People in the valley want to speak at city council, you need to reopen Van Nuys video conferencing. Valley is an underdog. I speak in, uh, LA County has video conferencing in San Bernardino, you can have it here. I'm seeking against the newest gun control laws pertaining to trigger locks, making it mandatory for all, uh, on all guns for law-abiding citizens, um, and, uh, so, uh, they keep track electronically of every ammunition and gun and registration of guns of law-abiding citizens because criminals don't abide laws. If you have the money for that, you have the money to do video conferencing in Van Nuys. They so course exclude law enforcement to have to have trigger, uh, everyone has to have trigger locks on their guns, even guns without ammunition. You need to have common sense laws, not mand, not mandatory laws. It's gonna cost millions of dollars to do this, and that, so if you do, you have money for video conferencing. You want to make law-abiding citizens into criminals. A misdemeanor, it's wrong.
All right, Rick Nightingale.
Boy, since I've been here, it sure did turn into a Gestapo-type of deal, I'll tell you right now. It's unbelievable, I don't believe it. Now you wonder why Ferguson went the way it went. Between you crazy people up here and Harold Holder and, and our dear old president getting up and speaking where they shouldn't have been speaking until the grand jury turned around and made a verdict, you guys wouldn't keep your mouths shut. Now you make us keep our mouths shut when we're down to one minute. Give me a break. You people are unbelievable. And you wonder why people riot, but the only problem is, when Hispanics ri, uh, uh, go and picket and all that, they're peaceful. But why do blacks have to burn everything? They did the Watts riot, they burned the city, they go to Full Reserve, Fullerson, and burns the city. I cannot believe the people didn't go up in arms and more people didn't die, because I would be protecting my business if somebody came through the door and turned around and burned it.
Daniel Gus. I'm sorry, Mr. Wesson, I didn't see that. Mr. Wesson.
These protests, I, I, violence, damage to property, there's no place for that. But these have been some of the most diverse protests that you've ever seen throughout this country. So I just want you to recognize that the majority of them have been peaceful, they have been very diverse, and Mr. Krikorian reminds me, especially in LA, we have gone above and beyond the call of duty to try to afford individuals the opportunity to state their opinions. But you, don't make this an ethnic thing, don't make this a racial thing. Sergeants, what, yeah, now then, show, help, help, he is disrupting the meeting, he is disrupting the meeting.
These rush there, so that's good there, that's enough. For the record, for the record, put Mr. Wesson's mic on.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, as well. Could I have Anita O'Connell? Uh, Daniel Gus, I apologize, Daniel. Daniel Gus, then Anita.
Good morning. Uh, just so you know, that I was surprised to find out that you can watch channel thirty-five on ATT U-verse, it's there. Uh, it is a pay channel, but you can watch channel thirty-five not on Time Warner. Hopefully, I can get a few seconds back because of that. I'm hoping to have lunch very soon with Cindy Montanez. There is a pit bull breeding operation in Nury Martinez's district. For a year, her office has not responded to the concern. I'm gonna give the documentation to somebody who wants to do something about it in CD six. In the next few days, I'm gonna come out with an article on City Watch regarding bona fide fraud that you have ignored. I have been pursuing an audit of animal services from top to bottom, not like the one that Wendy Gruehl did. I am going to expose fraud and theft by Brenda Barnett, who just got a raise for the mayor. It is going to be a shit-hitting-the-fan moment. I also wanted to thank Herb Wesson for hopefully bringing in a little dog with a broken leg from West Valley maybe next week. We think he's gonna be, may I just finish the sentence? We think the dog's leg is gonna be amputated, I'm hoping Herb Wesson can champion this dog's adoption as he always does.
All right, thank you very much. I have a name here, man, is there a man here? Madam Clerk, do you read the last name here, please? Ms. O'Connell.
I'd like to request that Monica speak first, my comments are more relevant after she's had her son.
Very good, so thank you for, that's okay, you can sit back down.
Is that okay?
Okay, start the clock back at, uh, one oh one.
Okay, thank you so much. Van Nuys has more than twenty-nine mental health help centers from Sherman Way to Oxnard Boulevard, and there are literally countless shelters, no one can tell us how many halfway houses there are in Van Nuys. In June, LA County provided over half a million dollars to Village Family Services for an emergency shelter for at-risk eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-old youth. Currently, they are seeking a variance to house eight-plus at-risk eighteen-twenty, eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds. We have over two hundred signatures we collected in three hours from residents opposing this shelter, and there are thousands who stand with us. There was zero communication with the community from VFS or from the county. The house on Kittredge is three hundred feet from Van Nuys High School. St. Elizabeth's and Columbus Avenue Elementary School are within blocks. We ask your support to quash this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Connell.
Regarding that proposed help center, I've lived in Van Nuys as a homeowner for over twenty years, I remain hopeful that more positive developments will arrive in my neighborhood. That includes Sepulveda Boulevard, Victory Boulevard, and Van Nuys Boulevard. Unfortunately, the opposite seems to be true, and this proposed drug-help center residence is piling on. Prostitution appears to be thriving, loaded addicts are wandering the streets and literally into traffic, it's a common sight, pot shops have sprung up on seemingly every block, and I did not appreciate having to drive by a billboard only several blocks from my home picturing a giant rainbow condom while taking my kids to school. Uh, Van Nuys residents deserve better than this. I do not support any development that does not have a clear, positive impact in this community, and I expect my civic leaders to do the same.
Thank you very much. Candido Perez.
I've got nice words, I'm gonna be gentle there. I'm not gonna attack the sixth district. Good morning, Mr. President, council members, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, good yontuf, um, Kwanzaa, all of them, may you all be blessed with good health, especially your children. Uh, Mr. President, I'm here because I always talk about how grateful that I live in the twelfth district, that I have a representative by the name of Mitch Inglinger, who, uh, who can do it all, and recently, I've been spending a lot of time over at the Greg Smith Pal facility and with Susan, uh, Suzy, Bruno, Mr., Mr., Mr. Inglinger? You are making dreams come true there. I normally go during the day, but I've been there in the evenings, and I see families, families, fathers, mothers, and the kids, and it's, it's not all about karate and exercising, but it's about the family unity, and that is what you're doing in our area. It's a model program, I hope that, uh, we can spread that, or other council members would, uh, take a look at what you have out there, because it's not named after you, it doesn't have your name, it has the name of Greg Smith, your former boss, and, uh, it's just wonderful that you support something so much, and it's fantastic. I hope we can bring it to the sixth district, the Jeopardy program.
Thank you very much, that completes the public comment cards today. Uh, Mr. O'Connell, City Attorney, would you want to formally introduce your special guest today? And go up to the microphone right there, do it like a real gentleman, okay? This is our city attorney, Deion O'Connell.
I'd like to introduce you, or reintroduce, uh, to some of you and introduce, uh, her to the rest, uh, my mom, Delia O'Connell, fifty-one years living in Northridge.
All right, good, it's good, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm very proud of my son, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, does he call you every day?
He, well, not quite every day.
I want you to, that's an order, Mr. City, call your mom every day.
But he does call me.
Okay, good job.
And we're not under oath, so we're okay.
All right, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posted in referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, members? I want to give a big announcement, tomorrow at thirty-ninth at Figaroa, Mr. Price's district, there'll be a great city championship football game, starting eleven o'clock with LA High, Romans versus the Vikings of Monroe. And then Silmar will play the next game against Hamilton. Mr. Coretts is left early to warm up for the Yankees. And then, uh, Carson is the nightcap for the Big Division versus Darborn. Uh, big championship games, LA City High School, and Mr. Price, thank you for your leadership on the Coliseum Commission, that we bring back the city high school champion games to the wonderful Coliseum. Any other announcements? Any adjourning motions? Do we have adjourning motions? Announcements?
My apologies, just wanted to, uh, remind everybody to cheer the Silmar Spartans, they are playing against Hamilton High, sorry for whoever's district that is.
Coretts.
Well, go Spartans. It's gonna be, uh, Saturday at three o'clock at the Coliseum.
This, uh, this Sunday, we've got the Granada Hills Holiday Parade, and, uh, yes, we've got one person coming. So, um, it's actually, no, it's, it's a huge, huge holiday parade, it's phenomenal, it's fun for the friends and family and children of all ages, so we encourage everybody to come on out, Sunday, Granada Hills. come on out, Sunday, Granada Hills Holiday Parade.
Mr. Bonin.
About seven-thirty PM at the corner of Windward and Pacific, people in Venice will be relighting the iconic Venice sign in holiday colors, along with Santa Claus, it's something we've done for the past few years. In the past few years, celebrity guests have included Angelica Houston or Robert Downey Jr., there will be a celebrity guest again tonight. I'm not at liberty to reveal her name.
Her name, so we got fifty percent chance. Okay, good job. Mr. Bonin, thank you for your leadership there, and that historic light is, it's almost as iconic as the Hollywood sign, although it's well now all around the world, I see it in advertising. Mr. Blumenfeld.
As long as we're talking about the holiday events, we got tonight, the Jingle in the Jungle in Tarzana on the, the streetwalk, and that starts at six o'clock.
Mr. O'Farrell.
President, this evening at five o'clock at the LA Central Library, where we are unveiling the bust of one of the most prolific poets in history, that of Khalil Gibran, that takes place at five o'clock, and I look forward to seeing all of you there.
That's worth your good work with the Beirut District City. Thank you so much, Mr. O'Farrell. And we have Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On Saturday evening, from beginning at five o'clock, the Neighborhood Council Valley Village is going to be featuring the Fourth Annual Light Up Valley Village. It's an opportunity for the community to come out and get to know businesses in the Valley Village area. There's gonna be a lot of festivities in the neighborhood, so everybody should come on out and get to know your local small businesses on Saturday. And then on Sunday, of course, Sunday is December seventh, the anniversary of the Pearl Harbor attack, so I hope we'll all use that as an opportunity to remember the service of our World War II veterans and thank any that you know for their service. In addition, on Sunday afternoon at three PM, the Studio City Neighborhood Council will be, will be featuring its Luminaria Festival from three o'clock to seven PM at the historic Campo de Coenga, the birthplace of California as we know it, Mr. Labonge, it'll be happening from three PM to seven PM at Campo de Coenga, thirty-nine thirty-nine Lincoln Boulevard.
In the fourth district, but you got the parking lot in the second district.
Actually, the fourth district begins right at the edge of the fountain, the building is in the second district.
I don't think so, I'll meet you there tonight in the dark. Hey, I also want to say, tonight at Toluca Lake, they got a great at five o'clock, and one thing's great about the city of Los Angeles is the neighborhoods. And just in the last few minutes here, each of you expressed the special events that are taking place in the neighborhoods. And tonight at Toluca Lake, it's a wonderful open house, and you walk along Riverside Drive, and a lot of fun. We're gonna have a very special car show coming down the boulevard and light the tree and all of that. Tomorrow morning, if you get up early, go out to the Wilshire Boulevard, just east of La Brea, we're having the Third Annual Miracle Mile Run. It's fun, and it's free, and if you want to run a flat mile, you start right at Orange and Wilshire Boulevard, finish right in front of Lakpa, a fun run, and we got a lot of high school students coming. And also in our neighborhood of Las Feliz, the lights at the Las Feliz Branch Library will be lit tomorrow evening at six o'clock, so there's a lot going on in our communities, and we thank our city staffs, all who have helped us in achieving these goals and our community partnerships. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. You just reminded me, I also wanted to thank you for the lights at the zoo, and if you would like to speak to that, there's, it's gonna be a great new holiday tradition, thanks to your leadership at the Los Angeles Zoo.
Well, thank you very much, you know, I worked for, they started the zoo lights with the DWP, but the Riverside Fly Conduit had to come through, so it was discontinued, and people complained that the DWP should just do their work and not do community work, so thank you, twelve ninety money, and thank you, colleagues, working with Glazier and the Zoo Department. It's a wonderful evening for that, so it will go on and on, and I hear good rave reviews, so it's a lot of fun. And I want to say one other thing, too, members, what I did this week, which was one of the best things. A new reservoir is put in service called the Headworks East, which is right by Mount Sinai Forest Lawn, right off the one thirty-four freeway. And I got to make the command, Mr. City Attorney, I got to say, turn the valve, and they did, and the water started to roll, which rolls...
Did you say, there it is, take it?
No, I didn't. I don't want to copy Mr. Mahoney, but the water comes from the Owens Valley and through Mr. Fuente's district and Mr. Inglinger's district, and through all your districts, and then it ends to the rest of the city, and the Silver Lake water serves South Los Angeles, East Wilshire, and the downtown area, so it was a good thing to do. If you ever get to turn on a valve, it's pretty exciting to do, so, anyway, I could talk more and more, but I know you want to go. Thank you for your service. This meeting is adjourned with some, wait, 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 I got, I got away too soon. Mr. Blumenfeld, thank you. Donna, would you please rise for adjourning motions? David, please, in the audience, please rise for adjourning motions. As we conclude our meeting, we recognize citizens from throughout our community in the remembrance in their passing. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you. It is with sadness that I adjourn in memory of Marilyn Robinson. Marilyn passed away on Sunday, last Sunday, at eighty years old. She was born and raised in the Bronx, and that Bronx accent never, never left her. I first met Marilyn in oh nine, when she was introduced to me as the Princess of Winnetka. She was a volunteer extraordinaire, a member of the Winnetka Neighborhood Council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Neighborhood Watch, the Park Advisory Committee, pretty much anything that you had where the name Winnetka was in front of it, she was a member of it. And I, she has too many titles to list, she was the Vice President, Treasurer, Outreach Chair, over her many years, I think she wore every hat that you could. Her passion was helping kids, and she did that through each of these organizations. She was a longtime resident of Winnetka, and she cared deeply about the future of this great community. When she learned about elementary school kids who were homeless, that were living in her area, living out of their cars, she sprung into action, and she started to raise money for food and for blankets and for toys, and she was that kind of person, a can-do person, but a, a community person. She focused, she worked with the Hope Chapel and other groups to, to make a difference. I'm grateful that I got to know her personally, I was proud when she came, she was one of the people that came to my, my swearing-in and sat at one of these very chairs right here, as we had the audience in the background. You know, she's, she's a wonderful per, was a wonderful person, she really was the princess of Winnetka, and may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members at this time, let's all remember those who went before us, continue to serve the city well. This meeting's adjourned, have a safe weekend. Thank you, staff.